Members of council, if you can please take your seats. This meeting is now resumed. Before we review the order paper, I would just like to ask the mayor.
Well, Madam Speaker, and members of council, I just wanted to, some will have their own independent updates, but I just wanted to update collectively on our friend and colleague Deputy Mayor Pam McConnell. She's still fighting, but I'm told that she had a good night. She's surrounded by family and friends. I had a chance to go up yesterday during a little bit of our deliberations to visit her, and she was surrounded by family and friends, including a couple of people from here, but others as well. And I think she, I know she very much appreciates the messages of support that people are sending to her because they're being brought to her attention, including the card that came from here that councillor Fletcher delivered. And so I would just again encourage the public to send messages of love and encouragement to councillor underscore McConnell at toronto.ca. But she's, as you would expect, fighting, and she had a comfortable night, I'm told, so we'll all have our fingers crossed today. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. So, members of council, we will not review and confirm the order paper. To this point, council has completed 279 items. There are 23 items left on the agenda and four member motions. Today's meeting must end by 7:30 PM under council's policy of ending meetings before sundown on Fridays to permit religious observance. Members, I will review-
If I could, I just feel, if I could- Order, I just feel in the interest of full, plain, and true disclosure, I should disclose to the members of council that I have a, I want to, I guess I have to call it what it is, a bit of a wager with you, in that two baseball tickets stand on my belief that we can finish this agenda by 3:00. And I don't want that to influence anybody's behavior, including yours, including yours, Madam Speaker. But I just thought it was best I should disclose that because I wouldn't want anybody to find out later about it and feel that this was, because I believe that is possible, it's achievable, and it's desirable, be it being July. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
But then I don't go to a baseball game.
Well, that's your problem, but-
Members, I will, yeah, members, oh, please. I'm not a beer drinker. Members, I will review the order of consideration of items today after the release of holds. Please put your name on your request to question staff. And I've also reviewed a number of urgent motions to be added to the agenda if we get 30 members. But I also want to mention, we do want to end early today as well, not only for the bet that the mayor and I have made, but Marilyn is celebrating 33 years of marriage today, so she would like to celebrate. She would like to get out early today so she can celebrate. Okay, the release of holds. Councillor Perks.
Thank you, Speaker, with reluctance. I'm going to release ED on page three, ED 22.10. I continue to be concerned about how thinly spread our capital dollars are in this, but today is not my day.
Okay, thank you. So on page three, ED 22.10, councillor Perks is releasing on favor, carried, recorded vote. We're on a different color today, councillor Kerjanis. Pink was yesterday. It's on your desk.
Councillor DiGiorgio, please, and thank you.
Councillor Mamalidi.
Councillor Lee. Councillor Davis.
Councillor Mehevich.
Deputy Mayor, please.
Councillor Mamalidi, please.
The item carries unanimously 33 in favor.
Thank you. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Speaker. On page four, striking committee, ST 13.2, appointment to fill a vacancy on the Budget Committee. I will release that item and fully endorse councillor Mehevich for the vacancy.
On page four, ST 13.2, appointment to the Budget Committee, councillor Davis is releasing on favor, carried.
Gracious of her.
Councillor Cressy.
Thank you, Speaker. On page six, I have two items. First is MM 31.48, 19 Duncan Street. I have a motion. We have a settlement. We've worked with staff and the applicant, and with the motion, I can release it.
Okay, just a sec, we'll put the motion on the screen. That's on page six, MM 3148. Okay, on the amendment, recorded vote.
Councillor Kerjanis, please. Deputy Mayor, please.
Councillor Palacio, please. Councillor Fragadakis. Councillor Mehevich. Councillor Grimes.
Councillor Lee, please.
Councillor Mehevich, please. Councillor De Baermaker, please.
The amendment carries unanimously 33 in favor.
Item is amended, on favor, carried. Councillor Cressy.
Thank you, Speaker. In the second part, that was the heritage matter. This is MM 31.49, again, 19 Duncan Street, and this is the conclusion of the settlement. I have a motion, and with that, I can release it.
Okay, on the amendment, this is on page six, MM 3149, recorded vote.
Councillor Davis, please.
The amendment carries unanimously 33 in favor.
Councillor Grimes? Oh, sorry. Item is amended, on favor, carried. Thank you, councillor Grimes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In the spirit of getting to the ballgame and Marilyn out for dinner with her husband tonight, I'm going to move that we break from lunch from 12:30 to 1:15.
Okay, councillor Grimes has moved that our lunch will be from 12:30 to 1:15. Councillor Thompson.
Speaker, we have the launch of Summerlicious today, and I think that some members of EDC and others will be attending that, which is at 176 Young Street. So it would pose a problem for us in terms of that re-altering all the time. So I just wanted to inform council. Yeah.
When is the announcement?
It's at 12:45.
So, count-
1 to 1:45, we break for lunch, from 1 to 1:45. The announcement. 12:30 to 1:30?
12:30 to 1:30? All right. Recorded vote.
Councillor Mehevich, please.
The motion does not carry. The vote is 21 to 12. The required two-thirds majority was not achieved.
Okay. Mayor Torry?
Yes, Madam Speaker, page five, items TE 25.66 and 25.68. I've spoken to the city staff, and I'm prepared to release those.
Okay, thank you. So this is on page five, TE 25.66. On the item, on favor, carried, on page five, TE 2568, recorded vote.
Mayor Torry, councillor Mamalidi, please. Councillor Cressy.
Councillor Wong Tam, please. Councillor DiGiorgio.
The item is adopted unanimously 34 in favor.
Members, the city clerk has noted on the order paper, the order of consideration of items previously decided by city council. I strongly encourage members to keep to this order for the benefit of the public, members and staff who are following this meeting. Now, we do have a couple of members' motions that we want to introduce. Councillor Leighton.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I would move to introduce this motion without notice on the proposed purchase of community space within or adjacent to the development site and the proposed sale of City-owned Public Lane known as Honest Ed's Alley.
On favor, carried. And the other one? Councillor Fletcher. Okay, councillor Fletcher's not here, so who's the seconder? Pardon? Councillor Davis, you're the seconder. Would you like to move it on behalf of councillor Fletcher?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. On favor, carried. All those in favor of adopt-
Madam Speaker, I would like to move to amend the order paper. Just that item that we just introduced-
Oh, yes, sorry, yes.
Pardon me, we spoke about this earlier. It's critical that it happened before the bills, so, and preferably this morning, so that everything can get ready and staff. We may lose staff this afternoon, and so I just wanted to be quite clear that I wanted to give time for council to review the staff report that will be circulated. So I'd recommend that we hear it after CC 31.1. I've spoken to councillor Grimes, who's holding PG 21.9, and I believe this will be a quick item. I just wanted to give staff time, council time to review it.
Okay. So that's the members' motion that was just introduced that will be circulated with the staff report. Request to have that item dealt with following CC 31.1. On favor? Recorded vote.
Councillor Thompson, please. Councillor Bylaw, when you're ready. Councillor DiGiorgio, please. Councillor Wong Tam. Councillor Matt Lowe, please. Deputy Mayor Min Wong, please. Thank you.
Councillor Grimes, please. Councillor Grimes, please.
The motion to set the item as the second item to be dealt with today carries 34 to 1.
All those in favor of adopting the order paper, carry. Okay, we'll go to page five, CC 31.1. The ombudsman? Okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. I am mindful of the time constraints of council, but I'm pleased to provide for council's information, a very high-level overview of our investigation report released in May, which dealt with the handling of a park permit. I'm going to deal briefly this morning with three areas: how the issue arose that led to the investigation; secondly, our key findings and recommendations; and finally, the broader impact of the investigation. In July of 2016, so just a year ago now, there were several media reports of the city having booted a sports program for toddlers out of an East End park because of complaints by neighbors. The sports program was run by an organization, a company called Sportball, and the park was Lyndale Parket. Other terms in the media coverage at the time were that the city had kicked out the toddlers, had turfed or thrown them out of the park, and some people were, of course, very upset by this turn of events. As you know, members of council, the people of Toronto have very strong feelings about our parks and also about our neighborhoods, and this issue touched on both of those. So my office started an inquiry to informally look at what had occurred, and information that we gathered raised some questions about the process that the city had used in approving the permit in the first place, in dealing with the complaints when they occurred, and then in its decision to revoke the permit and move the program elsewhere. So we decided to launch an investigation to take a closer look. We wanted to determine whether what had happened was fair, but more importantly, we saw an opportunity to make some recommendations to improve the way that park permitting is handled in the city. Of course, that's the essence of an ombudsman's work.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have to put you-
Sure.
Councillor Lane, please. I could hear you very clearly. Okay. Okay, sorry.
The essence of an ombudsman's work, as you know, is to study a problem and then make recommendations for improvements into how city services can be delivered in a way that is fair to all. So as part of our investigation, our investigator conducted several interviews with people on different sides of this issue and with different perspectives on it. She also reviewed extensive documentation provided by Parks, Forestry and Recreation, and looked at the bylaws and policies. Finally, she conducted a site visit. In terms of the findings about what happened in this case, we found that PFNR had granted the permit without complete information about when and how the park was going to be used. And this was very important because this was a brand-new use for this park, and so this type of permit had not been issued before for this particular park, and the information was incomplete. Secondly, when the neighbors complained, PFNR didn't investigate and didn't canvass the perspectives of the company running the program or of the people whose children were enrolled in the program before they simply and quickly canceled the permit and suggested a different location. Should note here that there were complaints both to PFNR and also there were complaints to the local councillor's office. And we found that staff who dealt with this at the time didn't really know what policies applied, either to granting the permit, to dealing with complaints, or to making and communicating a decision to change where the program would take place. We also found that the city didn't give reasons to the company or the participants in the program for the reason that it made to change the location. And when we asked, staff was not able to tell us, in fact, what policies did apply, what the clear reason for the decision was, and there was some disagreement among the staff members we asked about the reasoning for the decision. We found that there is really no process in place currently for handling complaints about the way parks are used or for addressing permit violations. The complaints policy currently deals with complaints about service by PFNR to members of the public, but doesn't address complaints about the way parks are used or permit violations. So in short, we found that the way the permit was approved, how it was addressed, and how it was canceled, all lacked fundamental fairness and needed improvement. I just want to note, we did not make any finding about whether this particular program should or should not have been in Lyndale Park. That wasn't our focus. Our focus was on the various processes that had been used to deal with the complaints, issue the permit, et cetera, as I've mentioned, and whether those were fair or needed improvement. So moving to the recommendations, we made eight recommendations, which we believe will improve fairness, transparency, consistency, and accountability in the way that park permits are handled by the city. They've all been accepted by PFNR. Highlights include development of a clear process to assess a permit application when there's a new use being proposed for a park, creating rules for staff who are considering perhaps canceling or relocating a permit, whether it's because of complaints or flooding or for any other reason. At times, staff have to make decisions about changing permits, and we thought that there should be guidelines in place for that to happen, and those should be made available to the public. We also recommended that parties who are affected by these decisions should be given an opportunity to be heard and also should be given the reasons when a decision is made. And the final key recommendation is that staff needs to be trained on the policy and processes that apply to their work, and that includes the very important responsibility as public servants to keep records of dealings with members of the public. So finally, just in terms of the impact of this investigation, it's very important to note that PFNR issues many, many permits every year, and in most cases, things go very smoothly. In fact, over 300,000 permits are issued every year, of which 7,000 are commercial permits for sports fields, diamonds, stadiums, and parkland, like this one was. So it's important to put this incident in context. But what went wrong here is an important reminder of the need for administrative fairness and proper policies in the way that the city delivers public services. It might seem to some like a small investigation, but I would respectfully submit that the lessons learned here apply not just to park permits, but to many kinds of discretionary decisions that city employees make every day affecting members of the public. It's important that these staff members have some discretion. In this case, they needed to balance the interests of the permit holder and its clients with the interests of the neighbors, to decide what was right in the circumstances and to work to find creative solutions when a problem arose. But the investigation illustrates the point that a focus, a narrow focus on good customer service, which of course is important in delivery of city services, is not always the whole story when it comes to delivering them in a way that is fair to everyone. In other words, good customer service and fair public service are overlapping concepts, but they're not always exactly the same thing. And everybody who deals with the city of Toronto is entitled to both of those things. So in closing, I would just like to acknowledge the participation and cooperation of PFNR staff, who were very gracious and enthusiastic about our efforts to better understand what had gone wrong and how services might be improved. They provided excellent cooperation to us throughout, and they have accepted and supported our recommendations and are already in the process of implementing them. In responding to the investigation, Ms. Romoff said that it was very timely because the division is in the process of replacing its registration and permitting software and seeking to improve business processes, to create a knowledge base for staff, and to simplify online information for the public. So now, all of the recommendations that arose from this investigation will become part of that effort. As we always do, Ombudsman Toronto will monitor implementation of the recommendations to make sure that it's complete and satisfactory. And then I just would also like to, of course, acknowledge the great work of my team. So today, Madam Speaker, I am, sorry, I'm simply asking that council direct PFNR to implement the recommendations, and anyone who wishes to read the report can see it on the website, which is on the screen. I'd be pleased to answer any questions that members of council may have.
Councillor, just that, you have a question?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. First of all, to the ombudsman, thank you very much for being patient and sitting through a day in May and a day yesterday. So I'm really happy to hear that Parks has agreed to the recommendations. I think they're reasonable. That's great. One thing I read in the report, could you highlight just very quickly the permit times that this applicant was asking for?
Yes, sorry. I believe there was a couple of evenings and Sundays. There were different times communicated at different stages in the process, which was really part of the problem, and when I said that the information was incomplete, it was in part because there was a bit of a moving target. But basically, yes, there were weekday times, there were weekday evening times, and there were Sundays.
Also, from reading the report, I got the impression that the permit holder, I shouldn't say Ms. Lek, wasn't quite clear of how many children would be actually in the park at one given time. Is that correct?
I think it would probably be fairer to say that there was a misunderstanding or a miscommunication about that. They were talking about numbers of sessions, and then there were numbers of kids per session, and then people didn't realize that, that there would be parents hanging around as well. So I wouldn't say it was a misrepresentation, but I would say that perhaps staff should have made sure to have clearer information and understanding in the process.
Okay, I guess my next question, thank you, is to the general manager of Parks. So in this report, it indicated, and I'm going to pick on the Sunday, I think the Sunday, from my understanding, was the biggest concern. The permit holder requested Sunday hours to be from 10:00 to 11:30, but actually, they were in the park at 9:00 AM on Sunday, blowing whistles at little children who were having great fun but making a lot of noise. How do we, you as park staff, follow? Does the permit holder actually use the park the times they've requested? I guess that's really where I'm coming to.
Through the speaker, it's a great question, thank you. You know, as the ombudsman has noted, we have 300,000 permits per year, and, you know, for the most part, permitting is on the honor system with the permit holder. We certainly don't have staff available at every location and every time that a permit is being offered. So if the permit holder is not using the appropriate times, quite often, the way we'll hear about it is through complaints from the community or issues that come forward publicly.
So we, obviously, I understand we can't have someone out there all the time. The other thing I do actually, I like from this report, and I'm sure you will agree, that our park supervisors are some of the best people to say whether this particular activity would fit into the park, because I understand that our permit people obviously can't know every single park with permitting. So are we putting somewhere in here that our park supervisors do get to see these unusual requests, particularly when we're starting a new activity in a new park?
Through the speaker, our current process is that if there is a requested use of a park, as an example, that has never taken place before, there's a discussion between the permit clerk and- the permit clerk and the park supervisor around the appropriateness of that particular activity for that park. That's an existing policy and approach that we have now that we will continue. As the Ombudsman has noted, in this particular case, there could have been a better documentation of the needs of the permit holder, and in this particular case, the park supervisor didn't know the full spectrum of the activities that may have been taking place in the park.
So would you agree that, in fact, this report has helped Parks with permitting? And as you say, we're looking at the new way of permits anyway. And as you also mentioned, with 300,000 permits and one or two maybe a year like this, this is actually a helpful report.
It certainly is, through the Speaker, and the recommendations in the report, as the Ombudsman has noted, are things that we've been looking at and thinking about as far as the review of the permitting process that is currently taking place. We're in full support of the recommendations and are already looking at implementing some of them.
Great. Thank you both very much. So my questions.
Thank you. Counselor Wong-Tam.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And a question through you to the Ombudsman, with respect to permits that become at times controversial.
Controversial?
Yeah, or there's contention. Oftentimes, those discussions are able to remedy themselves through perhaps a councillor's intervention and speaking with staff and also playing the mediator. In this case, why did you initiate this report? Because in my experience, sorry, I should probably frame that, in my experience, there's been times where we've just had to help it along, bring the sides together, but it's a matter of bringing the parties to the table as opposed to something that's systemic.
In this case, I don't disagree through you, Madam Speaker, with anything Counselor Wong-Tam has said. Very often, there is a role for, an important role for mediation to balance the interests, as I mentioned, among various people who have a perspective on the use of a permit. In this case, the reason that we started to look into the issue was because of these very inflammatory media reports that suggested that the city had acted unfairly and inappropriately. And that's right within our mandate to look at areas where that may have occurred and to make recommendations to improve systems.
So in the absence of the media reports that obviously amplified the complaints, through the normal course of action, which I've seen, you know, over the years here, do you believe this issue would have been resolved without the investigation?
I hope it would have. I think there are many mechanisms in place to assist with that from the councillor, as you mentioned. My office as well is always keen to assist in informal resolution of problems between members of the public and the city administration. And I think Parks as well, you know, was making bona fide efforts to balance the situation. It's just that the processes, when we went deeper, the processes were lacking, and we seized the opportunity to recommend improvements to those.
And so there are times where we have some events that have been permitted throughout the years, there's a long history to it, we've become quite familiar with it, and then there are new emerging communities, new activities, new animation and programming that is desired by the local community or the various stakeholders. And then there's oftentimes the conflict of available space, a certain number of days on a weekend in the summer, that everybody wants these permits. So as we move towards, as we push forward and try to be fair to everyone and to create a place of equity for people to access those permits, how does this report influence that particular obstacle and challenge, which I know exists, especially for emerging new communities, newcomer communities, that are trying to break into the park permit system so that they can actually organize for their communities?
Through you, Madam Speaker, to answer Counselor Wong-Tam's question, I think that these recommendations go directly to the issues that have been raised, because these recommendations improve the fairness, the transparency, the consistency, and the accountability of the processes that the many staff in PFNR use in deciding on many, many permits throughout the year. The processes need to be clear, they need to be accessible, members of the public need to know, how can I apply for a permit? If it's a new use, how will it be evaluated? What information is required from us? What information will help me to get the permit that I'm looking for? What are my obligations when asking for the permit in terms of providing clear, unambiguous information about my plans? What can I expect if somebody complains about my use of the permit or if they say that I'm violating the permit? What kind of process will be followed? These very things are what we hope will be, what we believe will be improved, and that should make it easier and more fair for everybody, every member of the public, whether somebody who's been having a permit year after year for many years or somebody who is seeking a new use through a permit to access those services.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Fletcher.
I just want to confirm the current, when there's a permitted use, particularly a new one in a park that may not have had any permits before, or let's say we have a market, something moving into a park, which is new, what's the role of the on-the-ground park staff in giving feedback to the permit office on that currently?
Through the Speaker, you know, as I outlined in the previous, the park supervisor, if there's a new use of a park, the permit clerk, the processes, will contact the local park supervisor for the reason that that park supervisor has the best knowledge of what goes on in that park and the actual attributes of that park, and will review what the proposal is for that permit. And based on the park supervisor's comments, that will influence that new use and approval of the permit. So if the park supervisor says on a Sunday morning, we don't have any permits in the park, but the park is packed with all kinds of casual use, that would then influence the decision around that particular new use of a park.
So we really and truly respect the supervisor and the degree of insight and information that they have on each and every park and the multiple, multiplicity of uses often in a larger park.
That's absolutely correct.
And so when somebody gets a permit for a certain time, would you not call that a bit sacrosanct? And I know, having been in these negotiations, as with the park supervisor and others, what time that permit should really start based on what else is going on in the community? So if you have a permit for 10:00, that's your permit time. It's not 9:00, it's not 8:30.
That's correct.
And so the onus really is on, once you're given that permit, those are the times that you're allowed to have that function in that park.
Through the Speaker, that's correct. And if I can comment, what exasperated this particular situation was a combination of a new use of the park combined with the permit holder not actually following the times that had been requested through the conversation that had happened with that park supervisor.
So the other option would have been to simply pull the permit.
Or to not approve the permit at all.
Well, had they not, they got in the park and then started at a different, used different hours than were on the permit. So once that started, and they're not within their permit times, what options do you have? You could have easily pulled the permit and said, you're not using any of our parks.
That's correct. The, you know, the permit criteria is that we can revoke the permit, so to speak, at our discretion. In this particular case, and as the Ombudsman has noted, you know, we did make an effort to move this program to another park so that the program itself could continue.
So you engaged in problem-solving rather than revocation of the permit?
We tried our hardest.
Rather successfully. And how many times did the permit tea get in there at the wrong time before that conversation was held with them?
Through the Speaker, we don't honestly really know how many times that happened, but the permit itself was relocated or revoked and moved to another park, I believe, within the first few weeks of the program.
And did the permit holder agree to that?
Yes.
So everybody was happy, they agreed to that. So this was a problem-solving exercise, and this park hadn't had any permits really before. It's very small.
Very few, very few.
But you have some parks that have multiple permits going through the day, markets, soccer, baseball, a lot of things that go on.
That's correct. This particular park, very small park, in the middle of a large residential area with just casual community use, very few permits in it.
And so just generally, some of those bigger uses where you have multiple activities under permits, if you have issues, I guess there is a system that you have to go in and start to fix that. That would be the park supervisor would know what's going on, have a conversation with the people that were in there. Is the fact this was Sunday morning a little bit of an issue, because we probably don't have a full crew out on a Sunday morning?
Through the Speaker, that's absolutely correct. Our weekend coverage is less than during the week, so our knowledge of the times not being appropriate on a Sunday morning, the chances of us not knowing that would be higher than, as an example, on a Thursday afternoon.
And so the problem-solving mechanism, there's somebody who's on call, I think, for weekends that would have.
That's correct.
Come out, knowing Cherry Beach Sports Fields, I know that very well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Davis, questions?
Thank you. Just a general question to Parks, to PFNR General Manager. I hear there is a review of permits. Is there a report coming?
Through the Speaker, we have been reviewing the system for the better part of a year in conjunction with the replacement of our software program, because this, the permitting system will also be supported by the new software program we have for registration. We are planning a report to Parks and Environment Committee in the fall.
And so you're examining a range of policies?
We're examining everything, the entire system. It's been our experience that there is a lot of streamlining that can happen. We're looking at increased access through online permitting and better coordination and client management around how these permits are handled.
Okay, I understand the logistical administrative side, but I'm asking about policies. Are they going to be revisited?
Through the Speaker, we're not looking at policies which are represented through council-approved policies. There may be some small tweaks to those policies, but we're not looking at a huge policy review. It's more around the administration, the accessibility, and the customer service components of permits. We have made some small changes already, and we are looking at things like collapsing permit categories so that they're easier to understand and easier for the public to access.
Okay, because we have had, over the years, these ad hoc changes in fees, you know, arts in the park and now movie night in the park, and all of them have to do with all of us around here wanting to make accessing our parks more affordable for our communities. So I don't know whether there's, you're going to be looking at all around community use more generally in this policy?
Through the Speaker.
And affordability?
We are, and I think some of the changes we've made recently around art in the park and what's before council tonight, today, this morning, pardon me, on the movie nights in the park, which we've also recommended to waive those fees. We've had many discussions with Friends Of groups and parks people around some of the issues that they're bringing forward around the accessibility, the affordability of very community-based, small permits, and we are looking at that from a policy perspective around how to increase the accessibility from an online perspective but also from an affordability perspective. And you can expect some recommendations in that area.
Okay, that's good. The other, well, there are two other things that I think should be looked at, and I'm wondering, are you looking at these to turn this into a question? One of them is whether priority is given to neighborhood groups as opposed to big leagues that may have people coming from outside to use the facilities in a park.
So through the Speaker, you know, all of our fields and our arenas as well are all administered through an allocation policy that has been approved by council.
The fields are?
The fields are as well. So there is a council-approved allocation policy. I should note that it is not geographically based, it's equity-based, because the distribution of these resources across the city is not equitable. So we do have many groups that travel from various parts of the city to access, you know, whatever resources are available.
And this leads to my final?
And certainly geographic preference is given to local groups.
Okay.
Wherever we can.
If there is geographic preference, and if there are competing, I think I'll just leave it at that. The one other thing is, is there any policy or do you envision addressing the policy of overuse of a park? Are we looking at all at permitting thresholds? At what point do you say we want X percentage of time just available for leisure casual use of a park? How much is overuse?
Yeah. He's just writing me a note. Through the Speaker, it is, I mean, many of these issues, and as the Ombudsman has noted, we really try our hardest to balance access to these parks and flexibility in allowing as much use as possible. What we are finding in certain circumstances now is that many parks are overused and overpermitted, and what we try and do is have a conversation between the local park supervisor and the councillor, looking at some of those uses.
Would it be useful to look at, ask you to look at developing some kind of policy around?
That was your last question, Counselor Davis. Let's try to keep on the Ombudsman report. Okay, to speak, Counselor Jacette.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I will be very quick. Thank you very much to the Ombudsman for this report, and thank you to the General Manager for obviously accepting all the recommendations. This, I think, was a very unusual situation. I'm sure most of our permits don't go through these hiccups, these twists and turns. I know I have many of my parks get many, many, many permits, and we don't come across something like this. So I think this is an important report. I think it will help with our new permitting system we are doing. One of the things I noticed was obviously, I know it's difficult to make sure that the permit holder actually abides by what they're asking. So I'm hoping that somewhere in our new system, we can maybe flag people who don't necessarily abide by their permits. So we do watch them a little bit more closely. I would also like to suggest that I know when we get a call in our office about a concern for a permit, I'm not asking park staff to jump, I'm asking them to investigate. So that is what I hope park staff for now on, you don't have to jump because a councillor hears a concern. It's a chance for you to investigate, get back to the councillor, and we go through the due diligence. So on that note again, thank you everyone for the support. It was good. I hope most people read it. The reports are quite short, they don't take much reading, and there's always a nice little summary for those who don't have time to sit down and go through every page. But we learn a lot from these reports, and this is why I hold them and this is why I ask for presentation. So thank you very much. There you go.
Thank you. Yes, we've got a very long agenda today. Counselor McMahon.
Good morning, everyone. Madam Speaker, I wanted to thank the Ombudsman for this report and park staff for their tireless efforts with finding a balance in our parks. We have so much green space, everyone wants to be outside enjoying them, and there's a fine balance with the neighboring residents. So I think this is great, because, especially because park staff are already reviewing the permitting system. That report will come back in the fall, so it's timely with this. And this was, I want to specify, this was a commercial permit, which is a little different than our other 300,000 permitted uses. So it's a little different to deal with. I deal with these kinds of things all the time in the beach. This was not the beach, even though the media said it was the beach. It was just a little over east of me. But we, you know, we have had issues, especially in Woodbine Park, which is a festival, really a festival park, and neighboring residents around, they're very concerned about the activity there. But, you know, there's a balance, and I try to remind people, even though it feels like our backyard, these parks, it is, it's green space, it's public space for the greater good, for the rest of the city, especially down in the beach. Lake Ontario belongs to everyone, so there is a balance. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate that park staff are under review with this. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Crawford.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This was a park in my ward, and first of all, I want to thank the Ombudsman, of course, for her work and the recommendations, and our park staff. They go through a lot of issues and problems on a daily basis, and the fact that they're accepting these recommendations, I think, are wonderful. Just to sort of paint the picture of what this, this is a very small, little park in my ward, in between two small residential streets, and I'm sure you have them in your areas. areas. And it's really, they've traditionally only been used by the people on those two particular streets. This park had never been permitted in the past, and the residents just assumed it was their small, little, private park, even though we know it was public and anybody could go to that. And I think when the permit holder came in, and this was a wonderful permit for kids, young kids, four, five, six years old, and I guess through the permit process and the park supervisor thought, you know, this would make a good, you know, good match on this little park. Now, this permit, or this park had never been permitted in the past, and I think parks thought, this would be a good opportunity for a little, if you want to call pilot project, to see if it works, and if it does work, maybe we could look at permitting this park in the future. So the intent at the beginning of the process was wonderful. I think everybody thought this was the best direction to go. But again, as we all know, when, when the process kind of unfolds and the permit comes out, they start using the park. I think a lot of the residents, and then you're talking 30, 40 houses maybe, couldn't figure out what was happening. And I think at that point, complaints started coming in. There were complaints that were coming into my office that I forwarded off to Parks, and I had a number of conversations with them, and of course, the media grabbed hold of this. And I think with the greatest of intention, our park staff were trying to resolve this issue with all of the kind of, you know, things that were happening very quickly. And this happened very quickly. And I think they looked at, well, how can we resolve this to try to benefit everybody? And I think one of the answers was, can we just move this down the street? And they actually moved this program 500 meters down to the street to another park that actually was, in fact, just as good or better. But again, it was the process on how they made that decision that was part of the ombudsman's report, and I think the recommendations as we move forward will make that process better. But as we can all understand and appreciate, when those kind of complaints come in, when you have the media, when you have the councilor's office contacting Parks and the individuals, sometimes things get a little hectic, and I think that happened in this process. Ultimately, I think we're going to be putting our processes and the permits a little bit stronger, but I think at the end of the day, the greatest of intent on a small, little program in a small, little area of my ward, similar to everybody else, has happened. It unfortunately got to the point where the ombudsman have to make a report. I think we'll all, we all looked at this and we went, you know, I think we need to do a little, little bit better. But it was with the greatest intention of everybody involved, and I just want to thank, again, the ombudsman for the report and staff for the work that they did. I just have to commend again, in my ward, the park supervisor and the work. They did unbelievable work in trying to balance out the needs of the community and all of that, and I want to thank them for that.
Thank you. Counselor Fletcher.
Yes, I'm just going to say, welcome to the world of the small parks, issues that become very big across the city because of the media. And I'll just echo what Counselor McMahon said. There's just parks that are multipurpose, a lot goes on, there are festivals going on in them, there's many things going on, multiple, multiple users all the time. And so that's just a fact of life and a way of life for a number of us already. So when these small things happen, there is usually a way to get that fixed. But I'm just going to focus on one thing, because having multiple permits and multiple issues, when there, this was a business that permitted this use of the park. The company gave, went in as a business and said, we're permitting Tuesdays, 10:45 to 11:45 a.m., Tuesdays, 5:15 to 7:00 p.m., and Sundays, 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. So that was officially what was logged with the permit department, as anybody would in the thousands and tens of thousands of little permits and big permits that go on. The supervisor had already agreed to those times, and yes, it was a new use. However, the company said, oh, we're actually using the park on Mondays from 5:15 to 7:00 p.m., that was not on a permit time. Tuesdays, 10:00 a.m. to 11:45 a.m. Tuesdays, as you remember, that was one of their times, but then they added an evening. And Sundays, 9:00 to 11:30 a.m. So there was a mishmash of permits. I don't know if they were told, go back to your permit times or not. So it's on the website, or what's on the website for the company are these times. People go to websites now, and I said yesterday, when they filled up the S.H. Armstrong pool, they went on social media, they went on Facebook, they're all talking to one another now in neighborhoods. Sure, there was a street Facebook that started going on this website and saying, what are they doing there on Monday? The permit says Tuesday. So we have quite a mishmash. But someone who's running a multi-business across the city actually has a responsibility to work within their permit times. If this was Taste of the Danforth, and they said, oh, well, we're having the road closed, or Hazelwood that closes their road for a street festival, they booked 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Saturday. All of a sudden, if it's 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Sunday, or they decide to close it Friday night, they've created a problem. That wasn't their permit. If Taste of the Danforth decides to change it to a different weekend, but they have a permit for a certain weekend in August, they can't do that. You have a use. So because it's a park, it seems a little different because it's casual, but any city property, if you're renting a room, Mattiakler Community Center, you're renting it for Tuesday night, not Monday. And if you get there Monday and you've made a mistake, that's once. If that's actually how you're advertising it, that's not once, that's very deliberate. So I'm sorry to sound so hard, but given the number of permits we all deal with and getting them set up, and I had to set the market up for Greenwood, and that was a lot of work with all the different departments, because that's a multi-use park with a lot going on in the day, to come to a resolution, and then that's your hours. That's how you're running this event. So I do feel that there's a lot of onus on the operator, but once the media's called and it looks like we're kicking out little kids, it's hard to recover from that, just to be honest with you. Just is hard, because then it looks like big, bad city is kicking kids out and not letting them play, rather than the city says, you have a permit that starts at 10:00, and there you are at 9:00 o'clock. So you actually have a problem. Very hard to message that. I'm happy we're having another system, but the real system is communication. Everybody who's applying, here's your dates, here's your times, and that everyone who's, everyone's acting in a professional manner, including a company. My last example is at Cherry Beach Sports Fields, when they were first built, we had the free permits for kids. I got a few complaints and passed them over. Some, one group had booked every time slot, and on the kids' times, adults were out playing. Adults were out playing. And then they said, we're going to go to the media and say, you're kicking the kids off Cherry Beach Sports Fields. Sorry, the onus a lot of the time is on the person who's getting that service to be, live up to what their obligations are here, and I don't think that happened, and I'm not sure enough weight was given to that in this report.
Thank you. On the item on favor, Carrie. Counselor Layton. Counselor Layton, you wanted to deal with your item MM 3169 following this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I have no questions of staff.
Okay, so you moved the item, that's on members' motion, MM 3169?
I will move the item and just very briefly thank, wholeheartedly, Joe and Nick from Real Estate, who have been working so hard on this file. You can appear, you can call these guys at midnight, answer their phone. They're, so, so call them all weekend. They, they have done phenomenal work here, and I'll remind folks, this is part of the Mervish Honest Ed's development, I guess not the Mervish, the Honest Ed's Mervish Village Development, that involves a new park, a, a market, 20% affordable housing, 40% two and three bedrooms, five, five buildings in total, taller buildings in total, totaling about 800 units, all rental. And this report ensures that all of that can come together, as well as a permanent home for a black cultural facility and cultural community space in the facility. And I applaud our real estate department and our planners for their work.
Thank you. On favor, Carrie. Counselor Fletcher, do you want to move your members' motion, MM 3170?
I don't have to do that.
Okay. On favor, Carrie. Yeah. It's done. All right, our next item is PG 21.9, which is on page three, the bottom of page three, which is amendment to the city's signed bylaw for 750 Spadina and 150 Sherway Drive and 153 Dufferin, 200 Lawrence, and 226387 Young Street and Toustron. Counselor Kergeyanis, you held the item down.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do have an amendment if staff can put it up. I'd greatly appreciate it.
Well, hold on, hold on, I'm going for questions first. Do we have any questions? Counselor Layton, questions?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. This is with respect to Toustron. What was your recommendation on Toustron?
Through the speaker, our recommendation was to refuse the application.
Can you go through the rationale for why you, you, you think we should refuse the application?
Through the speaker, our primary concern with this sign is that there's an existing sign there, and the portion of that existing sign, which is about 65 square meters on both sides, is digital, and that's the portion that probably is the most, or from our view, is the most problematic. And the application that's in front of council today is to take that digital portion and increase it by about two and a half times its size. About 160 meters away to the east is a residential tower in Liberty Village, and we know that there's other towers that are under development in that area as well.
So it's the digital face of the current sign that's the issue, right?
That's correct.
And the proposal is to triple or quadruple the size of that digital face? I think we're, we're actually at a-
The, sorry. Through the speaker, the proposal that's in front of you today is to take that portion from 65 square meters to about 142, 145 square meter, 145.5 square meters.
And what, what size of digital sign would be permitted in this area?
So first of all, what's important to recognize is that in this area, digital signs are not permitted in this area. It's an open space district where digital signs aren't permitted. Typically, in areas, if we look at the special sign district for the Gardner, in that district, normally it would be about 20 square meters would be what we would allow, 50 if it's an upgrade to an existing-
20 or 50 square meters, but they're applying for 145.
That's correct.
So can we just be clear about what the surrounding is? To the north is the residential component of Liberty Village, correct?
That's correct.
To the east is essentially Fort York?
That's correct.
And to the north of Fort York, Garrison Point, which is five buildings that Bill Toronto recently rezoned to house 2,000 people?
That is correct.
You can trust me on the numbers, but underneath the Gardner, have, did we receive a letter from the Bentway, the under Gardner Park folks?
Yes, we did.
And what was their advice?
Their advice was to refuse the application.
And the Friends of Fort York, this is the organization that's been fundraising millions of dollars for our Fort York Visitor Center, what was their advice?
To refuse as well.
So we've got the community groups around the site saying, you know what, our use of the space will be hindered by it. The residents to the north and to the east also suggesting that there's a problem. Why is the current digital an issue?
So the, the issues that usually we hear, the primary issues relate to the illumination levels, and so the impact of that on the residential adjacent to the sign.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Grimes, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My, my question to Exhibition Place staff, what did the, what was the board's position on this sign at Exhibition Place? What was the board's position on this sign at Exhibition Place?
Through the speaker, the board approved of this, the board approved to support their modifications to the sign on two occasions, once in 2015 and then once in 2016, and as recent as 2017.
Are Exhibition Place staff supportive of the sign, and if so, why?
Exhibition Place staff is generally supportive of the sign because of the additional income stream. It's a significant-
Joe, Joe, please, sorry.
It's exhibition, it's significant to Exhibition Place, and we believe the new-
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt. Counselors, the staff are trying to answer, and you're right in front of him speaking.
Through the speaker again, and we believe the restorative work and upgrades of the sign will improve the clutter. There have been a number of constants malfunction in the sign, and the new sign, I think, will be cleaner, less clutter, and will have a modern look.
So aesthetically pleasing for Exhibition Place. I know you probably can't tell us, but this is a significant amount of money to our bottom line at Exhibition Place, correct?
Yes, it's significant.
Can you tell us the number, or no?
Through the speaker, the financial terms of this agreement was approved by council in, as a confidential attachment, and therefore, it's probably, I cannot disclose that number in the public.
Okay, thank you. No questions to city staff. Are we happy with the current sign as it sits right now?
Through the speaker, with respect to the existing sign that's in place right now, we do receive complaints, as I had indicated earlier, primarily related to the illumination levels.
Okay, on those complaints, and going back to Exhibition Place staff, we had consultation on this sign. Could you maybe touch on that, about the complaints we've received? We've received complaints?
Through, through the speaker again, we had two public consultations. One was hosted in 2016, one was hosted in 2017, and there was one public brightness demonstration in 2015. I was not at a public consultation. Our CEO, Diane Young, was there, and the feedback we received from the public that was in attendance was very positive.
It was very positive and favorable, okay. What are the current hours of operation on the sign as it stands today?
Through the speaker, the portion of the sign that faces to the east, right now, operates 24 hours a day. The portion that projects to the west, it's required to shut down at night between 11:00 at night till 7:00 in the morning.
And the new proposal coming in, what are they proposing, the new, the new proposal?
Sorry, I didn't hear your question.
The new proposal now that's coming in, what, what's the hours of operation?
So the new, the new proposal requires the sign to shut down between 11:00 and 7:00 on both sides.
Okay, and right now, it's full motion video runs on the current, right?
It's, through the speaker, on the one side to the east, it's full motion video to the east. On the portion that faces to the west, it's a digital sign with changeable copy.
Will that be on the new sign?
On the new sign, it'll be the same.
They're gonna, it's gonna be-
On the new sign, the-
The proposed sign, they're gonna run full motion video?
No.
So it's just gonna be, what is it, static images only?
It'll be digital, static, that changes every 10 seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell, questions?
I believe staff held some public consultations about this sign, is that correct?
Through the speaker, staff held a public meeting in April, April of '26, and during that meeting, the concerns were around the illumination, hours of operations.
And, and was, is it safe to assume, I believe that I heard this in, in committee, that at the end of the session, the public session, that those that were in attendance, and it wasn't a big audience, but they were generally supportive of the change to the new sign?
Through, through the speaker, that's what, at committee, that's what we heard from the applicant. Our view from that public meeting was that there was an overwhelming support for the proposal.
Okay, so what is the overall size of the current sign?
Through the speaker, the overall size of the current sign, it changes depending which side you're looking at. So on the east, it's 242.6 square meters, to the west, it's 250 square meters.
And what's the size, the proposed sign of the, the size of the new sign?
So the proposed sign is 145.5 square meters, both sides.
So it's quite a bit smaller. I don't know what the percentage is. It's about, it's about one-third smaller, I would suggest.
Through the speaker, it's about 96 square meters smaller, so about 40%.
That's quite a bit smaller. And what are the illumination levels of the digital sign now?
So currently, the bylaw allows it to go up to 500 nits. The measurements, the actual readings that we're, that we've carried out are between 150 to 200 nits.
150 to 200 nits, and they're allowed to go to 500, but you, you said they're allowed to go to 500 nits?
Under the current bylaw.
But I thought the current bylaw didn't allow a digital sign there.
Through the speaker, that's a site-specific bylaw that allows the sign in the-
Oh, so where we allow a digital sign, we allow up to 500 nits, but this is only 150 to 200 as it is now?
That's 300.
That's what I heard. Anyway, let me go to my next question. What's, and what is the, sorry, go ahead.
I'll answer. Through the speaker, generally speaking, on digital signs, we- Through the speaker, generally speaking, on digital signs, we, it's broadly, I would say it's 300 nits. In specific locations, we've allowed it to go up to 500 nits.
Now, the, the current sign, I think you said, the digital portion, it operates 24 hours a day, is that correct?
Through the speaker, it's the digital portion that faces to the east goes 24 hours a day. The digital portion that faces to the west shuts down between 11 o'clock at night and 7:00 in the morning.
And the applicant is proposing how, what duration of illumination and advertising?
Through the speaker, the proposal that's in front of you today is requiring the, the proposal is for the sign to shut down between 11:00 at night and 7:00 in the morning on both sides.
So it'll be shut down so as not to disturb people. All right. I think that concludes my questions, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Counselor Hart?
Just a couple of questions, Speaker. First of all, to city staff, the list of signs in your report, are any of these signs close to being compliant or are they all highly non-compliant?
Through the, through the speaker, which signs are you referring to specifically, meaning in this report?
In this report, just in this report.
I would say, generally speaking, they're not compliant.
Okay, that's fine. Exhibition Place staff, just wanted to go back to your comments. You said that you're generally supportive of the sign, even though it's highly non-compliant with the sign bylaw because of the associated revenue, is that correct? So Exhibition Place staff are okay with it being highly non-compliant because of the revenue? Just want to be clear on that.
Through the speaker, Exhibition Place staff is supportive. We got our board approve it on two occasions.
And the board's position was driven by revenue, is that correct?
The board position was driven, not only on the revenue basis, but because the sign is, the technology on the sign is very old, it malfunctioned quite frequently. And the agreement requires the operator of the sign once during the term to upgrade the signage to modern, current, state-of-the-art technology. So the board believe that this will do that.
Okay, that's my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Perks, questions?
Thank you. To Exhibition Place staff, you said that you reviewed the sign on a staff level before taking and making a recommendation to the board, did I, when you were answering Counselor Grimes? Did I hear that correctly?
Through the speaker, yes. It was a staff, staff, was a staff, was a staff recommendation for the board to approve the modification to the sign, which the board adopted.
Now, when the staff, on the Exhibition Place staff, do you have any people with plans examiner or building official credentials?
No.
No? Do you have any, did any people on your staff with land use design credentials review it?
Through the speaker, no.
So it was reviewed, what, what professional skills were brought to your review of this sign?
Through the speaker again, the professional skills is in-house by myself. I'm the CFO and our, our CEO is Diane Young.
And, and your professional training is in what discipline?
Well, my professional training is in accounting and reporting, but I've, I've worked on sign issues for many years.
Right. So the, the professional advice you gave to the Board of Exhibition Place was based strictly on financial criteria? You brought no expertise in any of the impacts that the sign bylaw is designed to deal with?
Again, through the speaker, no, because when the board adopt the report, it's basically, the board is adopting the modification for the sign, subject to the, the sign operator getting all the building permits and application working through the city building.
So your advice was, was not saying just do the sign irrespectively, it was subject to meeting the test that the professionals in the buildings department provide?
Through the speaker, that's always the case because through the city's legislative process, through our board is just a staff process, so it's a different process. The board don't have the authority, the city have the authority for the sign applications and modifications.
So it would be...
The board only calls support.
It would be a misrepresentation if I were to make the claim that exhibition staff recommended this sign as being compliant or meeting the purposes of the sign bylaw or good for adjacent neighborhoods. The review you did was strictly on financial criteria, and you recommended that it be subject to the normal tests in the sign bylaw.
Through the chair, yes, it's always subject to the legislative process through the city department.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Minewong?
Yes, thank you. I have questions with regard to the Exhibition Place signs. Currently, there are four signs there, is that correct? Are there four signs there? I've seen a picture, there are four signs.
Through the speaker, sorry, could you repeat the question?
Okay, I'm, you know what, like, I don't know what's going on here, but nobody could hear any of the questions. Counselor Carroll, please?
Through the speaker, the offside parliamentary chat gets a little bit much. A little bit much.
I have no idea, like, okay. There is a question to staff. Hello? Hello, staff? Okay. There's a question for you, okay.
There, there are four signs currently in and around that location, is that correct? They're all clustered together?
Through the speaker, there's actually five signs.
There are five signs? So what is the combined square footage of advertising space for all of those signs together?
Through the speaker, it's about 550 square meters.
550 square meters, what's that in feet?
So it'd be about 5,000, 5,000 square, 5,500 square feet.
5,500 square feet. So, so is the proposal in this arrangement to all, take down all of those signs, yes? Are they gonna keep those up or are they gonna replace it with one sign?
Through the speaker, those existing signs would stay in place.
Oh, well, my understanding was they were gonna switch it, switch it out, switch them out and put in one sign? That's not your understanding?
Through the speaker, my understanding is the proposal that's in front of you is to take the existing sign at Toustron, which has three components to it, to replace it with one sign, digital sign.
Oh, one, so the three components means three, three faces?
No. Through the speaker, the existing sign has two faces. Each face has three different types of advertising on it. So it's a digital portion, static print, and a trivision portion, mechanical portion.
So they're gonna keep their same, the five signs, they're gonna keep those four or five signs up? My understanding was they were gonna take them down and replace them with one sign?
Through the speaker, that is correct. They'll take the existing sign down that has three components to it and replace it with one face.
And that, that sign will be smaller, yes?
Yes.
So, so they're taking down an existing sign...
Can you speak through your mic?
Sorry, I apologize.
I know.
So they're taking the existing sign down, the square, so what's the reduction in square feet?
Through the speaker, the existing sign is roughly about 250 square meters, which is about 2,500 square feet. And the proposal that's in front of you today is to bring it down to 145.7 square meters, which is about 1,500 square feet.
I see. And so, and the current signs are legal, yes?
Yes, they are.
So they, of their own accord, are reducing the size of the sign substantially, and they're, they're turning it into a digital sign. And they're also agreeing to this new digital sign, that it will not be on late at night to, so if there's any fear late at night that the brightness of the sign might interfere with any of the local residents, that, that is not an issue, correct?
Through the speaker, what the proposal is, is to turn off the digital portion that faces to the east?
Yes.
That actually runs 24 hours a day today. The portion that faces to the west, which faces the residential, currently does shut down at night.
Oh, so in fact, what they're doing in this arrangement is the part that's going 24 hours, that's on for 24 hours, it's now substantially reduced, so it's, at nighttime, it's not on. That's what you said, yes?
Through the speaker, the portion to the east is going to be shut down at night.
Yeah, so it's, it's basically small, a smaller advertising footprint, and it's not on late at night?
Yes.
Excellent. And, okay, fair enough. And can I ask a question of the Exhibition Place staff? So, so we've got a, we've got less of a sign, it's, it's not as bright as it used to be, and are you, are you gonna be making more money off this sign? How are you, how are we gonna do on this? How's Exhibition Place gonna do on this?
Through the chair, if council approved the modification to the sign, the proponent have proposed over the rest of the term, which is eight years, an additional $800,000 and...
Additional what?
Additional $800,000 is a minimum guarantee.
Over the, over the length or per, per year?
There's eight years remaining in the term, so they have proposed $100,000 per year, so that's 800,000.
So Exhibition Place is gonna use, get 800, are gonna, is gonna have $800,000 more, yes?
That's the proposal, yeah.
So what are you gonna, what, what do you need the money for?
Well, through the chair, Exhibition Place is an agency of the city, and part of a strategic plan is always to look at increasing our revenue base, so we does not infect, impact the tax base.
If the exhibition is a community space, it would be therefore used for community benefit?
Collectively, it's used as a community space also, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have got to ask members of council, it is very, very noisy. Members of council are asking questions to staff. It's hard, please. Thank you. Counselor Davis, questions?
I just want to clarify, there's, which of these applications have already been turned down by council in the
Through the speaker, the ones that have been turned down is this one that we're speaking about now, Toustron, and the one at Bluer and Spadina.
And the one at Bluer and Spadina. And your report says they can reapply only under certain, certain conditions. And what are those conditions? Why are they allowed to reapply?
Through the speaker, the applicant is allowed to bring it back, reapply after one year, or if they've made changes to the sign applica, or to the proposal. So in the case of Toustron, they've reduced the size by 20 square meters roughly, per site.
Okay, so there's been a very small reduction in the size, and that's allowed them to bring it back. There's another issue in this report that you identified that is concerning. One of them is to extend the term to 15 years from five? Which, which sign is that? And why would we ever agree to extend to 15 years?
Through the speaker, so there was a few of the sign applications where they asked to extend the, or extend the term from five years to 15 years. Typically, we like to actually have that five-year term so that we can go back and reevaluate.
Typically means it's in the bylaw?
It's required.
Have we ever extended a term for 15 years?
Through the speaker, council has extended that in certain circumstances, however, it's been rare.
How many times?
Two times.
Okay, which one of these is seeking a 15-year? Maybe you could get that for me later.
Okay.
Maybe you can just talk about the value of a digital sign versus the value of a sign that has the kinds of sections that are in the Strawn Avenue existing sign. You've done a lot of work on valuing signs. How much greater value, in your professional opinion, would there be in the sign for Strawn?
Through the speaker, I can't comment on the actual amount, but what we do know is that the value of a digital sign is significantly more than the other types.
So the, they may be getting 100,000 at, at the Exhibition Place, but how much is the sign company going to make out of that? Have they ever provided that kind of information?
Through, through the speaker, I haven't seen that.
Which company is it at Strawn? The Strawn sign?
Through the speaker, this application is from Astral.
Astral, okay. Astral has, as well, another report, they've challenged, is that the same company that's challenged the...
Through the speaker, when this Toustron came before council the last time, which I believe was in September, it was a different sign company.
Okay. So what I see here are a number of signs that are not within the district, sign district permitting it. So 750 Spadina is not within the district to permit it.
That is correct.
Sure, 150 Sherway at the Trillium Health Center is not in a sign, proper sign district, is that correct?
That is correct.
Dufferin Street is allowed in the district, but it's two and a half times bigger than allowed, is that correct?
That is correct. Digital signs are permitted there.
Lawrence Avenue far exceeds the sign size and the standards.
Signs are permitted, but not of that size.
Right. How big, how much bigger than is permitted here?
On Lawrence?
Twice the size, it looks like. Young Street, condos, if I could, I just, I know I don't have much time left. E condos, number five at Young Street, not permitted in this commercial district, is that correct?
Through the speaker, that is correct.
Strawn Avenue, not permitted in the sign district?
That is correct.
So five out of six are in districts...
Okay, Counselor Davis, your, your time's up, thank you.
That is correct.
Thank you. Counselor DiCiano? Come on, members, we really want to complete the agenda today.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I had a series of questions, but now I'm going to veer off, because I wasn't really happy with the context in which Counselor Leighton's questions were asked. And I don't understand why we can't have the answers with the proper context. So let's move to this existing digital. When Counselor Leighton asked the biggest problem, we said it was, staff responded that it's this digital sign that's going to increase two and a half times. That digital sign currently runs videos, does it not, full-out, like it's a television?
Through the Speaker, the digital portion that faces to the east runs full-motion video. The portion of the, or the side of the sign that faces to the west runs digital, but it's changing copy every 10 seconds.
Right. But let's go back to the television that's out there. So when I'm driving a car, I can watch a new Batman trailer with the existing sign if I want, if that's what they feel like playing, because it's a full-out television that's being offered.
If, through the Speaker, if you're looking at the sign facing the east.
Yes, yes.
That is correct.
Okay. And they're replacing it with, the proposal is to place it with a static digital.
On the portion that faces to the east, that is correct. That's the portion also, I would reinforce, that we haven't had problems with.
Okay. So when we're answering questions, why can't we answer with the proper context? Like, why are we not, like, that's a big deal to me, where we're taking a television and we're replacing it with a static sign. Like, isn't that, isn't that a big difference? Or is that not a big difference?
Through the Speaker, our view is we're taking a digital portion, that's roughly about 65 square meters, and we're increasing it to roughly 145 square meters.
But you're not increasing a television by 145 square meters. You're increasing, you're bringing a different size sign that's not going to be a television. It's just different. Like, it's not the same application. I don't take that television there, and if I want to create a picture, say, I'm increasing the television. It's a different application, is it not?
Through the Speaker, I would, our view would be that it's a different type of copy.
Okay.
And so it has a different type of an impact.
Okay. So currently, that sign is operating at 500 nits. Is that correct? You would agree with that?
Through the Speaker, currently, our measurements are showing that the actual illumination level is between 150 to 200 nits. However, the bylaw allows it to go to 500 nits.
So you've measured this sign, and it's only spitting out at 200 nits?
Between 150 to 200.
Okay. So what is, what is the new sign going to be spitting out at?
The proposal that's in front of you today is, the proposal is for 150 nits.
Okay. So it's not going to be brighter?
It'll be similar to what is, it's running at right now.
Similar to what it's running at right now. Okay. And the current sign, we, this application is replacing the current sign. We are not allowing for a new sign. We are just replacing an existing sign. Is that correct?
Through the Speaker, that is correct.
Do you, in terms of its look, what, how do you feel about the current sign versus the proposed new sign? I want you to give me your personal feeling of how you feel about the current sign in my face versus the new sign. What would you prefer, irrespective of all the technical policies and bylaws and?
Count, hold on. Counselor Leighton?
It's my personal feeling, and I feel that that question's probably inappropriate to ask staff, but I'll ask you to make that, give us your personal opinion about that.
I would draw, I would draw the question.
Yeah.
I would draw the question.
Counselor DiCiano, the staff have to respond.
I would draw the question. My point was made. Thank you very much. It's all my questions.
Thank you. Count, I just want to remind members of council that we have a lot of items on the agenda. Counselor Crisanti?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. How many signs do we have along the Gardner Expressway? Approximately, how many, how many signs are there of this, similar to this?
Through the Speaker, in this immediate area, there's approximately 12 signs, and further to the west, there'd probably be another five or six.
All right. So, and how many of those are comparable to the new proposed sign that's in front of us, in terms of size?
Through the Speaker, I would characterize it, if we look in the special sign district, the Gardner Special Sign District, the majority of the signs are between 50 to 64 square meters. There are two signs that are approximately the same size as this, about 145 square meters. One of them is operating and up. The second one has been approved, but it hasn't been installed yet.
Okay. So, and in terms of the distance of this sign, is it compliant to other, the distance to other third-party signs? Are we within the appropriate distance?
Through the Speaker, not for an electronic sign, it isn't compliant.
I'm sorry?
It is not in compliance.
Okay, you know, your report says the distance to other third-party signs, that this one would be, the proposed sign would be compliant. But I just want to be clear. That's Table 6 of your report. And it's in line with requirements.
Through the Speaker, what the table is showing is that it's in compliance with respect to the distance to other third-party signs, so meaning non-digital. But the distance to other third-party electronic signs, it is not in compliance.
How long has the existing sign been in place? How old is it?
Through the Speaker, about eight years.
I'm sorry?
Through the Speaker, the existing sign's been in place for about eight years.
Eight years. And the new sign is, that's being proposed, will be, on the east side, will be shut off between 11:00 PM and 7:00 PM, and also will not show any full-motion videos. Is that the case?
Through the Speaker, the proposal that's in front of you today would have the sign shutting down the illumination between 11:00 and 7:00 in the morning to the east, as well as to the west.
And will not show any videos either, full-motion?
Through the Speaker, yes, the portion of the, digital portion that's facing to the east, it is full-motion video today. This proposal is for it to be digital, static copy, changing copy every 10 seconds roughly.
Right. And why, why is that? Can you explain why that is? To accommodate, to accommodate the community's request?
Through the Speaker, the, once again, the port, the sign that's facing to the east has never been a problem from our perspective. We haven't received complaints about facing to the east. The issue has been the sign facing to the west.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Counselor Kergeianis to speak. Hold, hold on. Yes? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a motion. If staff can put it on. I am moving that instead of not approving to approving, and that's for the sign at Two Strong Avenue Exhibition Place.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Counselor Cole?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a motion to change the recommendation in regards to the sign at 700 Lawrence Avenue West and send it back to staff and for them to report back at the November, sorry, where is it, at Planning and Growth Committee. The reason being, for those of you who know lovely Lawrence Square Mall, it doesn't look the greatest, and it has about 45 signs scattered all across the building. Yeah. So there is an effort to consolidate that, clean it up, which is, which I like, the community likes. But obviously, this sign in its current form is not something that we, we are, I like, the community likes. So there's an effort to keep the conversation going, send it back, and hopefully, when they come with a new package, they'll still be doing all the other exterior renovation that is 30 years overdue, but have a sign that complies with our bylaws.
Thank you. There's a question for you.
Any minute? I did just want to confirm what I last heard, which is that the intention is to bring back a legal sign.
That is certainly my hope.
Thank you.
That's been strongly suggested to the applicant.
Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Leighton?
Madam Speaker, thank you very much. It, I have a motion, and that City Council refused the application to amend Section 2K of Schedule B for the sign as it relates to, or for the sign at Two Strong Avenue. It always, it always surprises me just how powerful the four suits are up in the gallery at shifting the vote in this chamber around signs. It always surprises me how, just how powerful our sign lobby is in this city. To take, to take a sign that has, has already been refused by council a month, a couple of months ago, bring back something just a shade smaller, and be able to flip some of those votes, that is remarkable work. Whatever they're getting paid, and I, we all know it's a lot based on the discussion yesterday. We all know it's significant. They deserve every penny of that. I'm just saying.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Counselor Kergeianis has a point of order.
I think Counselor Leighton has gone a little bit out of line saying how much people are getting paid and not getting paid. These are people that are actually, these are people that are actually registering with the lobbyist commissioner, and if there's any problems, they should be taken up with the lobbying commissioner. But to call people like this is totally inappropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. I was in fact giving them a compliment at their power and influence and the value of the work that they do. This sign, and if I could go to the overhead, I want to put it in some context. When, before, when this sign was approved eight years ago, my understanding goes back to 2009, before Liberty Village was really built up to the full extent. You've got the sign down here, facing east and west, and I can tell you that those are all buildings that have been built roughly between about 2007 and now. These five buildings were just approved, and in fact, it was the city, through Bill Toronto, that sought their approval. That's about 2,000 people. And I get it. It's a couple, it's a couple hundred meters away. But that sign is so high, and it's actually quite a bit higher than signs are allowed, but that sign is so high that it far exceeds the height of the Gardner. All of those south-facing windows are going to be looking at that screen. And I get it, it's not a television screen, I get that. But I don't know if you have a lot of residents that are exposed to light at night in this way. But every 10 seconds when that sign flips, when it goes red, when it goes yellow, when it goes gold, when it goes to that bright color, I get a call. They little, little counter my office. Every time it changes, I get, I get 10,000 calls from Liberty Village. The reality is, the actual impact of that static video is quite significant because of the 10-second changeover. And we heard from staff that in fact, this sign face was already functioning at the, roughly the same level that our new sign would, despite the bylaw that supported a slightly, the current bylaw that supported a slightly higher level. Now, I'm going to remind those that were in the room, and perhaps those who weren't in the room last term, just why this east-facing sign face has no restrictions. That's because staff recommended we put restrictions on it, but one counselor in this chamber moved late one night at council, removing all restrictions on that east-facing sign face, and a majority of counselors supported it. I did not. It was a fairly close vote. It was a former colleague of ours, but at the last minute, removed, removed all restrictions suggested by staff. So had we followed staff advice to have restrictions, we wouldn't be having this same debate, and folks wouldn't be using that as an argument. Further to that, staff are making the same, the same judgment now, despite the decision made by the Exhibition Place Board, based on their report from staff, based on the financial analysis that was done by their staff. And Hardatt is good at his numbers. I'm not discrediting that. But our sign bylaw staff over here are experts on signs. We should be listening to them, not listening to them, our sign lobbyists, not listening to the board on this matter, but instead, addressing this issue through the local community and our sign bylaw unit. And I'll give you just one last piece of information, because it has come up. I was at several of these public consultations. I was not at one of them. But the consultations I was at had rooms that didn't have many people on them. But you know when you kind of get the feeling that the room's been stacked a little bit, that there are individuals in the room that perhaps are there, not just for the purpose of giving their public advice? That was kind of the notion that I was getting at those meetings. To their credit, the previous sign owners actually brought down a sign a quarter of the size, and we went to Exhibition Place and played with a mid-gun, which was a lot of fun.
Thank you. Your time, your time is up. Okay, Counselor Kergeianis, clarification of the motion?
Clarification of the, of the, of the motion and the comment that was made. 10,000 calls at 60 seconds per call, that's 600,000 seconds. That's 6,000 minutes. That's 100 hours. That's 2.5 weeks of a staff person to answer.
My staff are very busy.
No, hold on, hold on, Counselor. That is not clarification of the motion.
Madam Chair, he professed the, the motion.
If I could, if I could answer the question, I believe from that distance, the counselor couldn't see my tongue firmly in my cheek as I made that comment. So, so it's fair enough.
He said 10,000 calls. Are you standing by that, yes or no?
Fair enough, that, that the counselor did not get the sarcasm in my voice.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor Leighton, please. Counselor Kergeianis' question was out of order, so it's best not to answer. Counselor Cole, do you have a point of order? Yes?
Is there some value in reminding members of this chamber that the question is not about the speaker's speech?
That's right.
But in fact, the motion that is in front of us, maybe as a refresher reminder, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker?
I know. And thank you, Counselor Cole. When we do ask questions, just to remind, is that you take the motion that's in front of you, which is the green one, and you ask questions on the motion that's before you. That's clarification of a motion, not what the member of council says during their speeches. So thank you very much.
But you use this language in order to support their motion. That language has to be called into question. If that's not in your preview, that's fine.
We're, this is municipal, this is not federal. Counselor Mamalidi, do you have clarification of the motion?
It was really on a point of privilege on the comments he'd made. I was wondering whether or not it was actually Kyle Ray he was referring to with the?
Okay, that's?
No, it was not.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's not a point of order. Counselor Hart to speak.
No, it was, while he was here.
Speaker, I stand to support the staff recommendations and Counselor Cole's motion to take a second look at his sign and to make it compliant. Speaker, as the former head of bylaw enforcement for the City of Toronto, I'd be very hard-pressed to support a report that is highly non-compliant with regard to signs, and I'll be consistent in that regard as long as I'm here. When I look at the issue, you know, I've heard from staff at the Exhibition Place that revenue was, was a driving force, and I certainly understand that we, the city certainly needs revenue. However, it puts us in a very bad position, I think, when we're driven by revenue, especially as the government of this city, that we're going to use revenue as the basis of a decision when we have bylaws in place that are very strict, and I think for the betterment of this city. I think all of us should take a really hard look at this issue and the message that we're sending staff. You know, we send staff off to write reports. They come back with reports that address city bylaws, give us advice that's, advice in conformity with the direction we've given them when we adopt these bylaws. Then they come here and they're highly questioned about their expert advice. You know, we've heard from them that these signs are highly non-compliant, yet a number of counselors are turning their mind to adopting these signs. You know, as a former head again of bylaw enforcement, I think, and I respect the bylaws of this organization, this city, and I think we all should. Thank you, Speaker.
Now, before we go to our next speaker, please, please, hello, please, I, please welcome the adult ESL students from the Riverdale Immigrant Women's Center located in Ward 30. Their local counselor is Paula Fletcher, and their group leader is Melissa Hunter. Welcome. Counselor Kelly to speak.
All right. Thank you, Speaker. I'm going to support the Counselor Kergeianis' motion on the sign at Two Strong, and Counselor Cole's as well. Speaker, I am, I'm not going to betray my affection for and my appreciation of electronic signs in an urban context. Cities historically, Speaker, have been cities of light. And if you, if you understand that and you combine with it the electronic revolution that we're going through, I think that you would be supportive of this, of this initiative at Exhibition Place, at the, at the effort that the sign company has made to address some of the concerns that have been expressed in the past. Speaker, I think the sign bylaw, and I frankly was not a huge fan of it, I think this sign bylaw is going to die a slow death of 1,000 bites. The sign companies are going to be coming here on a regular basis to get an exemption from this or an exemption from that. And I think it would be really important, Speaker, if only to save the time that we, that we, you, we invest in these issues. It's important, I think, Speaker, that we, at committee, revisit the sign bylaw so that we don't put staff through what Counselor Hart had just outlined. In a, in a world as fluid as? In a world as fluid as this is, as, you know, in an urban environment, this challenging and this creative, an archaic sign bylaw is going to waste a lot of staff time, or defending it, a lot of staff time is going to waste a lot of time here at council. So I think frankly, in the end, bottom line is that this sign bylaw has to be revisited so that we stop running the gauntlet and the torture that goes with it in looking at issues as we are today.
Councillor Fillion?
Thank you. I'm going to read out a motion that I would have liked to make, but I'm advised by clerks that I can't make it in this forum, that the lobbyist registrar report on the amount of lobbying and the effect of lobbying in relation to digital signs, which do not conform to bylaws established by council and which city staff have recommended against. I can't move that here, I'm told, because it doesn't pertain to these individual signs. I will find the right forum to get that information out. Because this discussion has nothing to do with signs, it has everything to do with money. And there is a whole industry that has developed around getting signs on properties which do not conform to the city's bylaws. And there's nothing illegal about that. People can lobby about whatever they want, councillors can push whatever buttons they want, but there is an extreme relationship between how people vote, and not only are they lobbied, but who lobbies them. And the lobbyists have gotten very good at gee, who's got a relationship with councillor so-and-so. I don't fault them for that. That's their job, but I would really like all that data to come out. Because it makes absolutely no sense...
Point of order. Yeah, just one sec.
The topic at hand is not who gets lobbied, what the lobbyists do, the effect of the lobbyists. The topic at hand are the sign applications that have been brought forward from planning and growth. That's what we should be dealing with, Madam Speaker.
Yes, and I'll get right to that. So these signs would not have a prayer of getting approved, were it not for the activity of lobbyists and the amount of money to be made by multiple parties in getting members of council to vote against the bylaws that they have established. So tell me that's normal. Tell me it's normal that you have a body that sets rules and then selectively breaks them based on other factors. So, you know, this is not okay. You know, we had an example yesterday. So you can have somebody put a sign on a piece of property that is not particularly valuable, and if the sign brings in a certain amount of revenue, if it's a one-sided sign, even on some godforsaken piece of property that people drive by, you can instantly monetize that sign into, say, $1.5 million. So the owner of that property gets $1.5 million, and there's lots of, that can certainly be spread around to lobbyists, side consultants, wherever. If you can get a second face on that sign, it might be worth $4 million. And it's not just the annual revenue, you can monetize that value right away. You can buy a piece of land, have a digital sign put on it, have the value of that land increased by several million dollars, and then you can sell that piece of land for the additional several million dollars. So we are creating instant wealth for people by assisting them in breaking our city bylaws. And some people would say, oh, well, the Exhibition Place gets somebody here. Well, you know, if it's about revenue generation, and councillor Hart addressed this, well, if it's about revenue generation...
Thank you.
We could probably bring in hundreds, well, for sure, we could bring in hundreds of millions of dollars annually by putting digital signs all along the Don Valley Parkway. You know, you could, we could, we could, we could put digital signs in city parks, we could put digital signs everywhere, and it'd solve a lot of our revenue problem. We set rules based on what is good for the public, what is reasonable, and we should adhere to those rules.
Deputy Mayor Minin Wong.
Thank you. Can I see her here for a second? Thank you. I've got a, I have a picture. Do I have to press something, or does, oh, he's calling up. Thank you. So, let me first say that there's nothing wrong with people getting rich. In fact, I think we should celebrate people making money. Councillor Fillion has a different position, so do a lot of councillors, but in terms of increasing wealth, this council should be involved in increasing the wealth of the residents of the City of Toronto, as opposed to making sure that they make less money. Let's also, let's also talk about this idea of how we, we're building these signs that do not conform and do not comply, and that they shouldn't be coming and asking for this permission. And councillors, some councillors talk about this. We do this all day long, the planning applications that come. We make variances for them every single day, committee of adjustment, we do it all day long. You look at even things like parking pads, that's what we're in the business of doing. We're involved in making exceptions for people, for things that make sense, that's what we do here at Toronto City Hall. Okay? So, does this make sense? Well, councillor Kerjanis moves a motion that I'm supporting. Let's look at what the sign is right now. Look at how big and ugly that thing is, and if we don't approve, if we actually go forward with not approving their application, it's going to stay up till 2025. So you have that big ugly sign that's going to be replaced by that smaller sign. Okay? Hours of operations on the east side, 24 hours a day. The new sign, 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Right?
Councillor Davis, please stop interrupting.
So, so here we are. We're being asked to use our good judgment to say, do you want this big, these four big ugly signs, or would you like this newer sign that's much smaller? And by the way, the CNE gets, or pardon me, Exhibition Place gets 800...
Whoa, 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 whoa. On a point of...
Something urgent.
It was, I was told publicly, I asked that question, I didn't know before I asked that question.
I'm sorry, councillor Layton, that was public.
Okay. My apologies.
That was public when the questions were answered.
It was indicated to me by Exhibition Place that that was not public.
No, we were heard, we asked the question and it was said.
I asked the question and it was said here in this chamber.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, well, no, I mean, the gentleman from Exhibition Place, it's on the record already.
Yeah, I heard it too, $100,000 a year for eight years.
$800,000, we're getting $800,000. Plus, I'm told, there's also a capital contribution for a park. Okay, so, what would you like? Would you like to keep that big ugly sign and have nothing? Or would you like, till 2025? Or would you like to have a smaller sign that's going to be off at night, plus $800,000 and a capital contribution? For me, the decision's really easy. We make these decisions all day, and my answer is, I'm thinking I'm taking the money plus the smaller sign.
And the playground.
And the playground.
Thank you. Councillor Pasternak.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a motion. It's to approve the sign with conditions at 750 Spadina Avenue. I have looked at the surrounding facilities and properties. Doesn't impede on residential, there's a Tim Hortons to the northwest, there's a 7-Eleven, there's a Swiss Chalet to the west, there's a Scotiabank. To the east, there's two lanes of roadway and a U of T office building. This is something that generates revenue for the Bath, for the JCC, the Jewish Community Centre, at Spadina Blue, the Meizne Del is a vital community recreational cultural asset that costs a fortune to operate and provides, United Way Organisation provides facilities and services and cultural activities to all. This is not lining the pockets of millionaires, this is helping support a recreational and cultural centre that is vital to not only the Jewish community, but the local communities as well. I think that staff will be willing to work with the applicant to ensure that they make modifications to conform. They're very willing to, the openness of working with staff, and once again, the revenue generated from this will be supporting an important asset. It's impeding on the quiet enjoyment of the area, is negligible, as the area is a major arterial road, both east-west and north-south, and it is a cluster, a high-density cluster of retail and office. It will not be keeping people up at night, it will not be disturbing people, and it will support something that makes Toronto strong and vital. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do have a question for you by councillor Davis. Clarification of the motion, councillor Davis.
I wonder if the video people could help me with that in a minute. Councillor, you're aware that this sign is not allowed within this district, because it's a commercial residential. In other words, we allow signs within certain districts, you're aware this is not allowed?
Okay, clarify, councillor Campbell, please.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that...
Councillor Davis, you're to ask questions on the motion that councillor Pasternak moved.
Okay.
Only.
Well, I've just learned a piece of information, so I'm going to just leave that. Thank you.
Councillor, thank you. Yes, yes, John? Councillor Mamalidi.
The question.
The question's been called. Recorded vote.
Councillor Perutzha, please.
The motion to call the question carries 29 to 11.
Okay, first motion is motion one by councillor Kerjanis.
Mayor Tory, please. The motion carries 23 to 17.
Okay, motion two, motion, councillor Robert, councillor Davis? Councillor Davis, you're being very rude.
Stand up and apologize.
You do not yell at the public. Councillor, second motion is by councillor Cole. On favor?
Councillor Kerjanis, please. Councillor Perutzha, councillor Davis. Councillor Shan, please.
Councillor Mahavik, please. The motion carries unanimously, 41 in favor.
Motion three is redundant. Motion four by councillor Pasternak, recorded vote.
Councillor Carroll, please. Thank you. Councillor Perutzha.
Councillor Chrysante and councillor Mamalidi, please. The motion does not carry, the vote is 13 to 28.
Item is amended. On favor? Our next item is on page five. CC... Our next item is CC 31.13, which is the third-party sign tax. Councillor Layton, you held the item down. Do we have any questions to staff? We did ask questions on this in camera, so now we're in the public session. So councillor, anybody have any questions for staff? Councillor Jamarie.
So, please correct my understanding, whom I address there? Any third party would be able to erect signs?
Okay, just one sec. What staff are here to answer that question?
Election signs.
No, it's not election.
Who?
Third-party signs.
Okay, there is somebody, councillor Jamarie?
During an election.
Councillor Jamarie? Councillor Jamarie?
Yes.
We do have staff here, okay, right there, okay?
So, this is third-party signs, do they include elections?
Through you, Madam Speaker, the third-party sign tax would not relate to third-party advertising in the election context.
However, under the new provincial rules, third-parties would be able to advertise during elections.
The definition of third-party signs for the third-party sign tax does not incorporate third-party signs in election signs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions? Councillor Layton to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I would, I'll rise to move the staff recommendations from the city solicitor. And as, some of this is on purple paper, I'm going to tread very carefully, but I think that this is one indication that perhaps, perhaps billboard owners and sign lobbyists aren't always acting in the best interest of the community in the city when they take actions like this. We are, we are standing to be out a considerable amount of money as a city, we're being challenged by the very people that you voted to support just now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So councillor Layton, you're moving the item as long as, as well as the confidential report, correct?
Yes.
Okay. On favor? On favor? Carried. Okay, so we'll go back to page three. CD 21.8, cost estimate for the New Hope Shelter. I think we had speakers list previously? And if we can... Councillor Fletcher, if you can... Is this the list here that's on the screen? Okay, on this... On the item for CD 21.8, which is the cost estimate for New Hope Shelter, if members of council want to speak, can they just put their name up on the screen because we've lost the previous list? Councillor Fletcher?
I lost my right to speak. I put back in the movement.
Councillor Crawford's motion, and that's it? The amendment? Where's councillor Crawford's motion? Okay, so councillor Crawford... All right, so now here's the speaker's list on the screen. Councillor Robinson, you were the next speaker.
Yeah, I'll be very brief, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to just remind council that a few months ago, based on feedback and the expertise from our city staff, that this was a destination and an amenity that really wasn't necessary due to usage and the cost associated with the leasing, as well as the fact that within 2.1 kilometers, there's access to three other venues with the same amenities, meaning a pool. So I find it a bit concerning that we're looking at, just a few months after making a so-called tough decision, we're actually putting this back in. I don't think it shows a lot of backbone. I think we need to be looking at venues across the city so we can properly streamline things so residents still have access, but that we're managing the budget appropriately. So I think it must be a bit challenging for staff who make tough decisions, put these things forward. We, as a council, make a decision, and then three months, we're retracting that decision. And I think it's, you know, councillor Matlow's comments, what feels like several days ago, I think it actually was, his questions and his remarks, I echo completely. So I'm sorry to see this before us.
Deputy Mayor Minin Wong.
Yes, Madam Chair. I do have concerns with regard to the report, and I do support the staff recommendations, but I do not support the committee recommendations. Like councillor Robinson said, we have made decisions. We should stick by those decisions. So this idea that we need this swimming pool is wrong because staff have already told us there's lots of swimming available. And make no mistake, this shouldn't be about bricks and mortar. This should be about swimming. And if this is a fact about swimming, then there's already swimming available. The proposition that we should change our decision because there are, I believe, 60 extra people staying in the area does not really make sense to me when there are other places to go swimming. With regard to that it involves a community of homeless people or is... I think we should take that into consideration, but it has not been brought to my attention that the individuals who use this particular facility have a predisposition to want to go swimming every day. So for those reasons, I believe that we should support... We should not support... We should not support the committee's recommendations. They're not correct. We made the right decision, and it was a hard decision. Do you remember the budget debates that we had over this? They were very, very difficult decisions, right? It was hard for staff to write the report. We supported that decision. We made that decision. We should move forward with that decision. We shouldn't... This council should not be in the process of accepting motions that come forward before this council that continually try and claw back decisions that were made by the Budget Committee and that were made by this council.
Thank you. Councillor Dusset.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. So I support that we review this pool. I don't know who here was on council in 2002, whether you were an MP or an MPP, but if you were, you would have got to know my name quite well. In 2002, the city was looking to close down one of our swimming pools. And as parents, we fought to keep it open. But we didn't just fight to keep it open. We fought to find more revenue sources to go into that pool to help offset the costs. 2008, same thing. All the pools in my area were going to be closed. So as a parent, I stepped up. I worked with my school trustee, and we brought more revenue into the pools. We heard the other day at council that there is now more swimming in this pool. So I think it is worth reviewing. If a community are prepared to go out and bring revenue into a swimming pool to help offset the cost, we shouldn't be saying, "No, you can't do that." We should be supporting them and encouraging them to do that. One of the things I found when I was trying to protect swimming pools was working with school boards and working with the city was a little difficult because one of the best-kept secrets was you could actually rent a pool. So I do support the community. They want to keep their pool open. If they are prepared to help us and bring more revenue in and increase the amount of swimming in that pool, I do support it. In 2002, when I stood before the Parks and Environment Committee in this building, my very first time doing a deputation, I did a partial striptease. And you know what? It got the councillors' attention, as I've just got yours now. And my councillors at that time... No, not now. Were councillor Chris Corin-Kaczynski and David Miller. And Brian Ashton was the chair. And the point was that we talked about how swimming is a lesson, a life-saving lesson. We should be giving as many children, adults, and anyone who wants to learn how to swim, the opportunity. We have a lake to our south. We have lakes and lakes to our north and all around us. A lot of children go to areas where we do have water, as we've just found out, unfortunately. So swimming is a lesson that everyone should learn, and you shouldn't have to just go to a school which has a swimming pool. The community should have an opportunity where children can go and get their life-saving skill of swimming. So thank you very much.
Councillor Fletcher.
Councillor Burns, I think you should be using Grenadier Pond for some of those features, including for whatever. Anyway, I just want to very quickly say I'm supporting councillor Budget Chief Gary Crawford's motion, simply to add this into the 2018 process, and also to say that this actually has to do with the Hope Shelter and the type of services that the city would be providing when we're citing a new shelter or moving a new shelter. And to remind you that over the next couple of years, we're supposed to be opening about 12 to 15 new shelters throughout the city. And councillor McMahon and I have a fantastic community liaison committee over there for the Hope Shelter, and they are interested in upgrading the parks, making sure that parks are great. They're interested in having nurse, and we heard the other day that that's finally been secured, a public health nurse for the residents of this shelter. And really, they've also said, "Well, look, we still think that these guys," there's 60 of them coming to the community, "that we should consider this life-saving skill or recreational opportunities for them at this pool." And they are not going to go 2.1 kilometers away, as are many people in the community not going to walk their strollers 2.1 kilometers away. So this is just asking to consider this in the 2018 budget process as part of one of the features that would be used by the Hope Shelter and also, of course, would be used by the community in very good ways. Thank you.
Okay, so we have... If we can put councillor Crawford's motion on the screen, please. Okay. On favor, if councillor... Recorded.
Councillor Pasternak, thank you.
The amendment carries 35 to 3.
Okay, item is amended. On favor? Oh, that was the item. Okay. All right, so our next... Our next item is on page three, GM 21.4, uncollectible property taxes write-off. Councillor Jamarie, do you have questions to staff?
No, thanks.
No? Does anybody have...
This can be really quick.
No, hold on, there are questions. Councillor D'Chiano, questions to staff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Can I just get a very quick overview from staff on how it's possible through the property tax system to be unable to collect taxes on an asset? Just quickly.
Through you, Madam Chair. I can give you some broad examples of when that would happen. Sometimes we will... Not sometimes. We levy taxes against tenants in provincial and federal properties. The taxes are billed directly to the tenant. When that business, if it leaves, doesn't pay, goes out of business, we don't have the normal recourse to collect those taxes as we do against private sector properties because we can't register those taxes against the crown lands.
Sorry, just... Sorry, just one sec. We don't assess property taxes to the property owner? We do it to the tenants?
So federal and provincial properties, by law, under the Constitution, are tax-exempt. However, when they lease property to a taxable tenant, a Tim Hortons, a business...
This is crown land.
This is crown land. So a lot of the uncollectibles fall in that category. Another example of when a property taxes may be uncollectible. If private property, the owner goes out of business, and then we go to do a tax registration, a tax sale, and we find that there's environmental damage on the property. It's contaminated. We try to tax-sell it, and there's no tax sale. There's no buyers for it. So that's another example of when we can... We often will encounter a problem with collecting taxes. Those, I would say, are the two biggest, Mike. I don't know if you have any other main examples.
Through the Chair, that is the majority. Some of these items also happen to be items that were returned on the assessment roll in error, which have to be written off as well.
Okay, so should we be requesting some form of change so that crown land... So that system changes, so that we... So that it's up to the government to... Or we are allowed to charge the Crown Corporation as opposed to the tenant?
Through you, Madam Chair. That is a longstanding debate in municipal taxation, one that municipalities have lost a long, long, long time ago.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Perutzha, questions?
Yeah, just to follow up on... Just to get some more clarity in my own brain. I was under the impression that crown lands or government buildings, if they have a value associated with them, will pay grants in lieu of taxes. Correct?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. Where the province occupies the property for its own purposes, it doesn't pay a property tax. It pays a pilt, a payment in lieu of taxes. Where the arrears situation comes up is when they lease land to a taxable tenant. We build a tenant, and then the tenant goes bankrupt or doesn't pay. And then we can't recover.
So what you're saying is that the minute that lands get leased to a private entity, they stop paying grants in lieu of taxes, and it jumps over to another role directly applied against the tenant?
That's correct. On that portion that they occupy.
Okay. And the tenants are made aware of that before they get into...
Oh, yeah. Taxable tenants, through you, Madam Chair, do know they pay taxes. And the same would even happen on municipal-owned property.
And then the obligation to pay grants on behalf of the government in lieu of the taxes ceases, right?
On that portion occupied by a taxable tenant.
For that period of time.
For that period that the tenant...
And once the tenant leaves, then the grants kick back in.
If the province or the federal government occupies that property. Correct.
And if they don't occupy it, it stays vacant?
That's a good question.
If it has a value... I was under the impression that if it continues to have a value, they continue to pay grants.
Through the Chair, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jamarie to speak?
Thank you. I have a motion. And the reason I'm moving this, Speaker, is because there's a real terrible tenant in Downsview, and that's called Canada Lands. And they have a sweetheart deal with the federal government and the city. Everything they do, everything they do is against the community, and we keep rewarding them with $2 million here, $3 million here. This is just another sample of the sweetheart deal. In every other case, we hold a landlord responsible for bills not paid by the tenant, except in this case. So, yes, but they should not be able to get off scot-free. So I believe that my motion is in order because we can keep trying to collect from this terrible neighbor, Canada Lands, in Downsview, and we ought to be able to keep trying to collect.
Thank you, councillor Jamarie. Councillor Jamarie... Councillor Kerjianis has a question for you. Clarification of the motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering if my colleague has checked with legal and city staff, this is a crown land. I don't think we can do this. I don't think this is appropriate. I'm just wondering if you've checked with him and gotten the legal advice?
Yes.
And that's okay with our staff?
Yes, before I vote the motion. Because it's their tenants who we had charged the property tax to.
I, I don't think you charge tenants property tax, I think you charge the landlord. I think that's what's customary. And I, I don't...
But it was because of the tenancy.
I don't think it's appropriate, whatever.
Okay, so, on page 3, GM 21.4, Councillor Aldridge Mary has an amendment. It's on the screen. On favor?
Recorded.
Recorded.
The motion carries 29 to 6.
Item as amended, on favor? Councillor Aldridge Mary, you, you voted against your motion?
Are you joking?
No?
I'm on the prevailing side, Madam Speaker, I'm with the reopening. I'm with the reopening, Madam Speaker, I'm on the prevailing side.
No, you did.
I'm with the reopening, Madam Speaker, I'm with the reopening.
No, I, oh, oh, hold on, maybe, it was Ainsley, okay, I'm looking at As, okay, it was Ainsley.
Madam Speaker, just as a point of privilege, I think that's Councillor Ainsley.
Uh, sorry, Councillor Ainsley.
We know what happened, let me assume.
I'm sorry, Councillor Aldridge Mary, I just looked at the A and, okay. Item as amended, item as amended, on favor, carried. I apologize for that. And Councillor Ainsley and to Councillor Aldridge Mary. On page 3, GM 21.12, awarded request for proposal. Councillor Robinson?
Speaker?
Yes.
I'm just going to release that item.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on it? No? Okay, so on page 3, GM 21.12, Councillor Robinson is releasing, on favor, carried. Our next item is page 3, LS 20.1. Okay, the animals review. No, no, but hold on, I have to ask if anybody has any questions. Do we have any questions? Please put your name on the... Nobody has any questions because I'm going to close it up. Councillor Campbell, questions?
Why did the chicken cross the road?
I have questions to staff.
Hey, please...
No, you know what, madam, in the interest of time, I will refrain from trying to be humorous about some of the animals on the list.
There are two chickens in a bar. We all appreciate that, John, thank you.
Okay, no questions, so I'm going to shut. So we're going to go to speakers. Councillor Palazzo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move the following motion, and I'm going to ask Claire to display it, please. And that's in the event that City Council approves the pilot project permitting backyard hens, and there you have it, okay. So it's, my motion literally indicates that any participants abide by terms and conditions set at, set up by the municipal licensing standards in recommendation one, A, B, C, D, and E. Number two, that all participants in the pilot project be required to register with the city and enter into an agreement with the city requiring participation to abide with terms and conditions set by the executive director as related to recommendation number one. Then next recommendation number three, in terms of no compliance, to suspend any registered participants and who are jeopardizing public health, community disruption, and so on. And recommendation number four, report back, the executive director of municipal licensing report back to the license standards committee. And on this issue, and the last one, that you can see what it is. Madam Speaker, members of council, I have spoken to members of council, I have spoken to city staff from municipal licensing, I have spoken to the legal department, and I believe that we have found a common ground to move forward in a reasonable way. My motion is, will allow city staff to create a framework to regulate the pilot project in terms of conditions and, and the tools that actually will be there for enforcement purpose. The framework has to be simple, clear, and unambiguous in every way. Now, in this particular case, I believe that the set of recommendations that are put forward will allow city staff to create enforceable tools in terms of a bylaw that will come later. Councillor John Mayhevick will bring a set of recommendations as well that will give effect to the pilot project itself. So if city council in its wisdom decides to go ahead with it, I think that we have all the tools that will be required in terms of the bylaw that will give effect to the, to the pilot, and what I'm asking also to have a regulatory framework as we move forward. Personally, I'm not too fond of having chickens in within the urban environment, but this is not about me. Is, and this is about creating, things are changing, things are evolving, and we have to modernize our regulatory frameworks, policies, and so on. People are already having it here and there, and I think what we need is to have an open mind and to move forward with it. As Chair of the License Standards Committee, my job is always to ensure that not only the directors from City Council and directors from the committee or any other standing committees or council are met in a timely manner, but also to act as a liaison between city staff, members of council, and to try to figure out how to get compromises that will hopefully satisfy and create a win-win situation for everyone. On this one, city staff have been consulted, and my understanding overall is that what's before you and what's going to be before you, put by Councillor Mayhevick as well, it's something workable in terms of moving forward. So in essence, what we need is set of policies that are going to be clear and ambiguous and easy to understand. Hopefully that I will have, and we will have the support of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have some questions for you. Councillor Davis, clarification of the motion, three minutes.
I guess what I'm wondering is why you wouldn't have had this full discussion about such a detailed motion at committee? To put it on the floor right now with very specific details about a proposed regulation, I'm not sure that that's the appropriate approach. Why would you do that?
We have had this discussion in two, in 2011 and 2012, and this very item was before City Council, it was before City Council, and there was at that point a tremendous appetite from members of council to move forward and to create...
But, Mr. Chair, the public report focused almost exclusively on how to deal with prohibited animals, and I know there was discussion, some discussion, small amount in the report, but there were no recommendations. And so the public has not had the opportunity at all to weigh in on this, and because there were no recommendations before council, committee. And so I'm wondering, would you be willing to refer this back, have this discussion at committee, have a real and genuine debate to allow the citizens and residents, the residents of Toronto, to weigh in on this issue?
Thank you, Councillor Davis, for your question. Within the prohibited animal review that we went through in terms of reputations and whatever else, and when you see a bylaw, chickens are not prohibited within the bylaw. So this is something that it's within the preview of the bylaw and of council to look into it and to make whatever recommendations.
But these recommendations were not placed at committee. And so they are very detailed, and what I'm wondering is whether you would be willing to refer this back so that there could be a discussion at committee?
I don't have a problem to send it back to the committee and to have, and to have a good discussion, and mainly to afford an opportunity to members of the public to speak and to be heard on the item, but also, on the other hand, this is something that's already happening out there.
Why are you recommending, I mean, I could go through and ask you all the very specific, now I have no opportunity to even ask staff. I can't ask staff about these very prescriptive standards that you've put in an amendment?
In the event if City Council approves the pilot project.
Pardon me?
In the event or if the City Council approves it.
Okay, just, okay, first of all, it really doesn't help when I hear members of council chirping, time, time, time. Like, please. You know, it's very irritating. Okay, members of council, members of council, before I go to the next question, please. There are some members of council that have come to me because they didn't hear me, even though I repeated it three times. If there are any questions to staff, they now have questions to staff. So what's the will of council?
No, let's vote on it. Let's vote on it.
Well, I know I was very clear, but there's been, there's been a request.
So vote on it.
I tried, Councillor Chrysanti.
We can vote on it.
Well, if you want to move the motion, move the motion and we'll take a vote.
Well, then I'll move that we ask questions to staff.
Okay. There's a motion by Councillor Chrysanti that, you know, and that's the problem, because I said it three times, and, and...
You were very clear, and I'm going to support you. You did say, Madam Speaker, that you asked a question, yes. If there is any questions to staff.
And the problem is that nobody's listening.
So what is the motion, what is the yes?
Okay, hold on. Councillor Carroll, please, hold on. So we have a motion by Councillor Chrysanti to allow, to bury the proceedings, that we can allow members of council to ask questions to staff. Recorded vote.
So, no votes being spoken, not carried? No? Yes.
Councillor Kelly, please. Councillor Peruzzi, please. Councillor Wong Tam, please.
Mayor Torrey, please.
Councillor Shanwin, you're seated, please.
I, I just don't know, I mean, people are just not listening. I don't know what to...
The motion does not carry, the vote is 11 to 24.
Councillor Carroll, questions?
Madam Speaker, I have spoken to staff. I think I can help those who were hoping to go back to question staff by questioning the chair now. Mr. Chair, there is a debate coming on the, the actual pilot itself, correct? We're, the pilot itself, the motion. So we'll, we'll be having a debate there. The motion that you are moving now, did you go to the general manager of licensing and standards? And is this motion simply what the general manager says she needs if our debate allows for the pilot?
I did consult with the executive director of municipal licensing standards and with the legal department, and they did agree and made some revisions to my motions. And these are the motions that are before you. I do consult with city staff, I do consult also with members of council who have an interest to it as Chair of the committee, that's the way I work, is, in a very inclusive way.
So as, as councillors do on the fourth day, there was a lot of chatting when you were prefacing your, your remarks. Your preface was, you're not trying to stop us from having the debate on whether or not to have the pilot, but if the pilot is successful, staff need these measures to help enact the pilot. Is that what you are moving right now?
That's the purpose and that's the intention.
So we should have the debate on the member's motion, not on this?
This is in, in the event, if that happens, and then this will be the...
I think I'm clear now. Those are the clarification I needed. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor Chrysanti, do you have questions to Councillor Palazzo?
I, I do, Madam Chair, I just, I just want to just piggyback on what Councillor Carroll was just asking. So this request is to ask staff to come back with a framework as to how the pilot project may take place? What is... Or go forward directly to a pilot project?
In the event, if you read the first two lines, in the event that City Council approves the pilot pro, the pilot program, that's a key. That's a key because that will give effect to the bylaw itself. If that doesn't happen, and then nothing happens here.
Okay. And was there any discussion with staff with respect to including additional public feedback other than, or where, where was the pilot project going to be conducted? Is it citywide or not yet determined?
There are, is, I believe, three or four wards where the pilot project will take place, and I believe that a few members of council and have indicated that desire is Councillor McMahon, Councillor Mayhevick, Councillor Dusset, and I believe that there is another councillor that, I believe that four wards.
And, and then aside from those wards, will there be additional input requested by the rest of the, the rest of the city, the rest of the residents in the city in some other fashion?
City staff, in recommendation number, number four, will be reporting back to the License Standards Committee and on any significant public health issues or any nuisances as you refers to the welfare of animals, and mainly to any, any concerns that had to do with public nuisances, other sanitary conditions, and any concerns from residents overall. So there will be public consultation, of course.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're recessed to 2 o'clock. No, no, that clock is wrong.
Did I release something, Madam Chair?
Pardon?
Did I release something?
Yes, yes, yes.
Sure, you can, we have time maybe for a couple releases, but not for any more speakers. Okay, Councillor Robinson?
Very much, Madam Speaker. This is page four, NY 23.2, final report, site plan control application. I'd just be very quick, Madam Speaker, just to say that I want to thank the, the parents of John Fisher Public School for their unprecedented engagement. What you see is these motions before you, most of which were passed at North York Community Council, and I want to thank North York Community Council for their incredible support through these past six months. You'll see here the highest safety possible, the highest possible safety measures are now in place to protect the kids at John Fisher School. And I especially want to thank the mayor for his involvement with this, as well as the local MPP. It was all hands on deck for this, this initiative, which was very challenging at time and has been called by city officials preposterous, a travesty. Bottom line is, we've done everything we can, we've exhausted all options, and we've got a great set of... got a great set of recommendations that have approval from the developer, the school, council, parents, as well as the daycare, as well as city legal and planning. So, that's what's before you. Again, it looks like a number, a lot of motions, most of these were passed by my colleagues at North York Community Council. We've just made some minor adjustments based on a meeting we had last week with all parties, and that's what's before you. I also want to just quickly thank my, my staff, who have worked seven days a week on this issue for the past six months. So, thank you to everybody who helped with this.
Thank you. On the amendment? Okay, it's not a quick item. Thank you, recessed to two o'clock. The, okay, Counselor Fletcher, quit, do you, like, you're just going to release it?
Pardon?
Just release it?
I am releasing, with the motion.
Which one?
PG, PG twenty-one point four, Portland's Planning.
Yes.
And it's a motion to look at the burnt-out building and what's going to happen to that on the, when the report comes back, please.
Does the staff have your motion?
Yes.
Okay. There it is, it's been circulated, on favor of the amendment, carried, item is amended, on favor, carried, recessed to two.